For April 3rd, 2023, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the roll.
Thon.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Gustafson.
Here.
Clistic.
Here.
Belzak.
Here.
Seven present.
We have a quorum that brings us to questions and comments and announcements of a general nature. This is something we added to our council agenda a number of years ago. This gives people from the audience an opportunity to address the council on an issue that's not on our agenda. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share with the council that's not on our agenda? Please come forward and just state your name.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is David Leatherwood, and I'm addressing the council about a Airbnb hotel that just opened up next to my house. I were, I don't think anybody wants a hotel next to their house when they bought a residential house. Then we're having a problem with parties. We had a 45-foot bus pull up in my 90-year-old driver's, I'm sorry, neighbor's driveway at 11 o'clock at night. We got just people coming. It's by definition, an establishment, the, the house is an establishment containing lodging rooms for occupancy by transient guests. So that's what's happening. We had a, the entire, we live in a cul-de-sac, and the entire cul-de-sac was full of cars. There was at least 50 to 75 kids in the house with a party all through the night. We'd called the police about it. Other issues that can arise, there's, we don't know who they're renting to. Our back of our house is a, is Elizabethide School. So what we're asking the city council to, to consider is something to prevent this from happening. I know they can, 30-day leases, that's something that's pretty, like a short-term lease is something that's standard for most villages. What I did is went to Naperville's ordinance, actually I have only six copies. I'd like to pass out what they're doing because they had the same problem happen to them with a Super Bowl party.
Thanks, Dave.
Thousands of guests arrive at this house, and they had a entire police force try and break up the, the party, and, and the cost that that incurred to the village was so outstanding that they had to look at creating a city ordinance to prevent that from happening in the future. So I'm sorry, I only have six of them, but I didn't.
I've got, I've got more I'm handing out, too, Dave.
Okay. So I'd like the city council to look at this, and I don't know what the village can do with, this, this is the hotel motel ordinance that the city already has, which is that a hotel is not allowed in residential housing. What can the city do to enforce this now, or look at adding this ordinance to the city code in order to prevent a hotel next to me? Yes, sir.
A quick question, is this like a one-time thing, or does it consistently happen? Because I can't imagine people wanting to come in Darien from like out of state or everywhere else.
I think so.
I'm thinking like Chicago, Lincoln Park, right? The odd areas. But Darien does not pop up unless it's like really cheap rents, it's the only thing that comes into my mind.
Her guest maximum is 15 on the Airbnb. You can go look at Darien Epic Stay, I think she calls it. And you can go look at the Airbnb website, and you can see her home, and she has this 15 maximum. So 15 people, and what can you do at a hotel for $180, $140, $130? So you can figure how much money you can save on that. But that's why it's so popular, and it's been rented out almost every weekend, past three months or so, two months. And like I said, a 45-foot bus. And, you know, I talked to the resident, he was a, so what it was, it was six guys that travel through the country, and they play bands. They go to different venues, and they were going to Avonston and Aurora, so they picked Darien to have their 45-foot bus in my neighbor's driveway for the week, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So, and that was one of them. The other one, I didn't talk to the partiers, but it was just a place where they could go rent, and they can have people coming and going all night. And we, like, called the police, they came out a couple of times, but that's, there was another party, it was a kids' party. You know, it was about 20, 25 kids that are having a birthday party. So they could just rent that out, and those type of issues, because we are pretty far from the city, but still people can come out to this area, they, for whatever reason. So it is happening, so.
Yeah, and this, this one's in, in my ward, and I've talked with Dave quite a bit on this, and I talked with Dan and with Brian on this. It's really ended up, this thing is going to turn into a party house. What, what, you know, what Naperville has done, and they were having the same issue, they have it now, so you cannot rent it out, a home out for less than 30 days. And that put a big kibosh to it, because right now, we're spending police time for the calls that Dave's got to make. We also have municipal services time, because we're writing up tickets and stuff, because they're not following our existing ordinances and things. So, I mean, we're doing all this extra work, when I think that the biggest quick fix is do what Naperville did, and don't let any rentals less than 30 days. And I think that will be, put a big dent into the amount of activity that you're seeing over there. And it's, and I talked to Naperville, and it seemed to be working for them.
David, I'd like to make a suggestion to the, to the council, and is that we take this under advisement, and we send it to our municipal services committee to discuss it. We can collect some information. Alderman Gustafson sits on that committee. This way then, they could take a look at this Naperville ordinance. You could even come in and you could present information at that, at that hearing, at that meeting. This way then, going through committee, it's exploratory. We get more of the data, rather than sitting here and trying to, you know, finalize it tonight without any information. We would have that, that hearing with the municipal services committee. How's that sound?
It sounds like it's something I, I agree with, that we need to go forward with. I really like to get the code, but also I'd like to see what we can do about enforcing the current code we have, which is you're not supposed to have a hotel motel with transient guests going in residential. But there's no, I don't know, I couldn't find the, essentially, you know, what is the penalty?
Dan, Dan?
Yeah, I got to expound on a couple of items, and I've been in contact with Mr. Leatherwood, as well as Alderman Gustafson in respect to this. The one party we were not aware of, apparently the police weren't called, and, and again, that was before. So more recently, we did engage with the police department in regards to the vehicles that were parked overnight there, or throughout the day. We had, in fact, issued a notice of violation with tickets to the owner, I believe it was a week and a half, two weeks ago now. So that owner will be, will have to show up in court in order to, you know, defend herself, himself, whatever the case is. And it was cited on a current code that we have, any more than two non-family blood relative members cannot be in the same house, more than two. Okay? So that's the way we're currently looking at it. So that's number one. Number two was with the RV. The RV itself was a notice of violation. So while that's a notice of violation, we have to follow what is referred to as a due process. That due process is basically 15 days of notification, then it goes to a ticket. Again, understanding that's what we believe is the Airbnb, within 15 days, it's going to be gone, but they've been warned. So with their warning, my opinion is the second time that a bus shows up, let's say within a year, for whatever reason, then they would be ticketed again. As, you know, I look at it as an RV, you may look at it as a bus, it's just a matter of terminology, one and the same, as far as I'm concerned.
But, you know, I applaud Dan for doing all that work on the enforcement, but I think if you went to no less than 30-day rental, you may not have, Dan may not have to do all that work, because that's all we're doing now, is fighting, trying to stop someone from doing something that we have code for, but we're, now we're going to have to constantly go back at this.
Also, with the two blood relatives, how am I supposed to know that?
See, and this is the problem.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so Dave, so it's listed on Airbnb or VRBO as, as called Epic Stay. Is the owner living there during the week? So nobody's there, it's strictly?
It's a pure rental. It's a hotel. If you look at the rentals, you can actually see the dates that are crossed out when she has occupants.
Because I know some people live in their home during the week, and they're rented on the weekends.
Nope.
Okay.
She does not live there, she lives in Ottawa.
I mean, not in Darien.
Or Oswego, or something like that, near.
Brian, what do you want to say, sir?
No, Eric and I had talked about that and Dan, as everybody said, so.
Yep.
There are numerous municipalities that have a code similar to this.
Yep.
And again, we did talk to Dave about, we do have longer-term rentals of homes where families come in, and maybe somebody's working at Argon, and the intention is not to stop any of that and let homeowners have their rights, but it is, again, this 30-day or shorter rental period that seems to be where the municipalities are going if they have an ordinance.
I, I had a house across the street from me that was rented out for a full year, and was rented out to two Argon scientists from Switzerland, greatest people in the world. So, I mean, when it's done right, I mean, we're not trying to stop anybody from renting their, their property, it's just, we don't want it to turn to a party house. There's nobody in this room that wants to live next to a party house and have parties all. If they're partying now, just wait till the summer. It's going to be a disaster over there.
Lester, you had a situation over in your ward, I remember like a year or two ago.
Yeah, we haven't had any issues since, since that incident.
Correct, and those were the same enforcement procedures that's, I just mentioned, were put in place, and it did get curtailed. Actually, there was two of them, one in the 68, next to 900 block, Claremont Hills Road, and then one near the high school as well. So they do come up every once in a while, it's not a, it's not as frequent. I mean, Ms. Mayor, if I'm understanding that correctly, would, would we be bringing a motion back to the city council for direction to provide?
Correct.
Okay.
Why don't you let Mr. Leatherwood know the date of your next municipal services meeting, Dan? Was it the end of, end of April?
Correct.
Be three weeks from today.
You might want to write that down, David, and?
I'll be talking with you, Dave.
Okay.
And then this, this.
Eric is on the, your alderman is on the committee, so.
Any other persons for me? All right, thank you for listening to me. Have a great night.
Yeah, thanks for coming in, Dave.
Thank you, David. Anyone else? Okay, that means we move on to approval of our minutes. I'd like a motion to approve the minutes of the March 6th, 2023 city council meeting. Moved by Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Shower. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Kenny.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Thon.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Our minutes have been approved, takes us to receiving, a few communications. Do any of the aldermen have communications they want to share? Alderman Shower.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got a, I got a phone call from Janet Tungit, who lives at 1041 Bobolink. She had two issues. The first issue was the fence that was deteriorating behind, I think it starts at Q and goes all the way south to the bank that separates that and Bobolink. It was pretty bad. I reached out to Dan, what's the latest update on that one?
Currently, we have a notice of violation going on that as well, as long as Public Works looking into that, so we've been working on it. Last year, we had a similar complaint to which certain things were addressed, or all the things were addressed with the exception of storm sewer, but it was still in acceptable state. Since then, obviously per Janet Tungit's email, there's been more deficiencies, including the fence, so we're looking at the fence right now, and I'm not sure, I'm, I ain't getting answer back from Karen. I'm not sure if this was previously addressed, or if this is a brand-new issue.
Okay, as long as you guys are on top of it, that's all that matters. So, and what about the dumping? She also mentioned about some dumping.
I wasn't familiar with the dumping, or what the extent of that is. I've also got our Public Works Superintendent going out there to evaluate the site for any type of debris, number one, and/or deficiencies that are within the actual detention area slash storm sewer infrastructure.
And for clarification, it's right next to Concord School, like, behind the, that little water.
Yeah, it's really, call it, it's no man's land, if you want to say, where it's really somewhat of a hidden. It's my understanding that the, the property owner is the office complex that is adjacent to Q, used to be, I can't think of the name of the company, out of Chicago, but.
No problem.
Anyway.
Alhoff or something like that.
I'm sorry?
Alhoff or something.
Yeah, that's one of them, but there was another, University of Chicago, I believe it was, it was also a partial owner, with the buildings in the back, it was used as a, not housing, um.
They own the parking lot behind, they, they own the, University of Chicago owns the parking lot behind the old Second Banks parking lot.
Correct, there's an office complex there, and it's my understanding they did sell some off. I don't know the full extent of that, so ownership is, you know, once we get the ownership, we'll continue to research.
As long as you guys are on top of it, that's all that matters, so thank you. The other question that she had specifically asked me, and she asked me specifically, how did I vote for the marijuana dispensary? And I told her I voted no in 2019. And that led into a discussion about, basically, how did we get a marijuana dispensary within 1,500 feet of the state of Illinois? And I explained to her, I said, from what I understand, there was no ordinance against it, but the situation was brought up, and I thought I'd kick it over to Brian to reiterate to, you know, the people at home about this, you know, being within 1,500 feet and so forth, so.
Well, there's, simply put, there's no regulation that would prohibit it being where it is now.
And Brian, just to clarify, it's the advertising that's the concern. The advertising is what's the concern within proximity.
Okay, okay, that's the main, that was the concern.
You mean the state statute has a limitation for advertising in, in certain areas?
Correct, correct.
But there's no statute limiting the, the distance between a dispensary and the school.
Right. There is a statute that, you know, has a distance between two dispensaries, and there are some people that might have, might be confused on that also.
But I think what confuses people, it was originally proposed by planning and zoning to have it be a 1,500-feet requirement, and that was voted down. So I think that's, that people saw that in city documents and thought that that was something that was mandated, and it wasn't.
And that was primarily after inaccurate social media posts. I think that's where I started getting a couple of questions, because it was put out there that it, that the dispensary should not be there. And as Alderman Sullivan mentioned, that was one of the reasons, but that was not, there is no prohibition against that.
Perfect. I just wanted that addressed, so thank you.
Anyone else with communications? Alderman Sullivan?
Um, so I'll just piggyback. I have had a series of communications with a resident in my ward, Ms. Lori Jopick, and she has asked several questions. Brian's been very responsive. We are going to have a sit-down with her, just to go through any other, in terms of the process and what came to play with the city of Darien not opting out of cannabis sales, and that a dispensary is going in over there on Cass Avenue, and just to dispel some of the concerns and, you know, miscommunications, or misinformation, I should say. But Brian has done a great deal of responding to her, and she's done a lot of her own research, too. So I just think the, obviously, the build-out's underway, I just think the more information we can share with the community about, you know, that it's going in, that it's to code, and, you know, that any parameters that need to be done within the strip mall, Bob Taft, the owners of the dispensary, just to put people's minds at ease, I guess, because it has been, you know, several years since we did not opt out. So that's one. Just the, the, I feel like it's a soap opera, but the I dot saga of North Runge Road, I'm like a broken record, but I did hear from another Pinehurst resident, Mike Murphy, expressing his concern. It's getting worse and worse by the days, and we don't even have ice. So I have talked with Brian, I've, Dan's done a tremendous amount of work. You know, we are encouraged that it's on the, the list of projects to be done, but I'm hoping that we can push a little harder and make some headway to get it elevated on the to-do list when we go down to Springfield later this month.
Just to reference what Mary just said, the Illinois Department of Transportation has a project that would take place from Mount Carmel Church around the curve to Bailey Road, and it would involve lowering the level of the road, it would involve guard rails, it would involve a number of things that supposedly would stop the extreme curvature that takes place there, which sometimes leads to the problems that we have, but it's not budgeted until '24, '25. Just to let people know, I'd want to, I think we're going to have it done tomorrow. It's about a year or so away. Tom?
Communication from Mr. Mike, U K S 7801 Sawyer Road. The issue is when you get heavy rains, the easement is higher than the rest of the yard, so it doesn't go away, so you end up with icing. So they had a couple of water breaks a few years ago, and just over time, it didn't, usually that settles quite a bit, but it doesn't seem to have settled, so you just get water stuck on the sidewalk in that area, so.
I'm sorry, Tom, where's, where's the wall, low sand?
On the side, on the sidewalk. So you have the easement that's higher, so you have the house.
Okay, so.
And slope down, so it just sits there and collects on the sidewalk.
7801?
Yes, yep.
We'll, we'll address it to see if there's any opportunities, but to your point, all those backyards on that block, well, within that several-block area, have no means of drainage than other to the front.
Yeah.
So unfortunately, I know we've proposed a couple of projects with residents, and a rear yard drainage projects, those have not moved forward. We have a couple others that are moving forward in the same scenario, but we will address that and reach out to the residents.
Eric?
Yeah, just a couple of quick ones. I had a conversation with the resident on Drover Lane, and they requested a yield sign at Drover and Parkview, and I, looking at that, I agree with it. I reached out to Dan, and I congratulate him and his team, had the sign up in a week, so that yield sign is now up. The other one is, I worked with a resident on Bella Road requesting a new light pole at Woodvale and Bella, and got, worked with the resident, got the additional signatures from the nearby residents. The electrical work has now been done, and we're just waiting on the electrical pole to be delivered. So once again, I thank Dan and his team for the quick work.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Joe?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I had a conversation from Jack Quinert on Summit Road regarding a stop sign. He feels that traffic down his street is excessive, and sent that information to Mr. Gombeck's office. They've been out to talk to him, they're going to do a seven-day study.
That is correct. We just completed, as a matter of fact, I have, preliminary results indicate that there is not a concern there, so I will be forwarding a report back to the resident, as well as yourself, and for any enforcement, additional enforcement that may be required over to the police department.
Okay, thank you.
All right, bear with me, I have about three or four communications. First one's from Deb Coleman, and it's basically a thank you for our allowing for the honor of serving as our citizen of the year. She feels it was a great honor for her, she's most grateful to us. I have one from Paige Holland Downer. Paige is Miss Northern Suburbs. She was looking for additional community service, and we were able to set her up. She worked the entire pancake breakfast for the Lions Club. She just wanted to say thank you to us. Bear with me, I only have one good hand here. Then I received a card from the first-hour American Government class at Downers Grove South High School. Thank you very much for taking the time to speak to our class about local government. We learned a lot from your presentation, we also appreciate your service to our community, and they all signed it, which I thought was really kind of neat. I just want to let everybody know that I've visited Hinsdale South, as well as Downers Grove South, and I spent an entire day at, at Hinsdale South High School just a few months ago. So I, when the kids ask me, what's the best part of being mayor? Best part of being a mayor is being able to go to Hinsdale South, or Downers Grove South, and visit the classrooms. And I taught American Government, so it's always fun to be able to talk to a group about American Government. So I appreciate that. I received a letter from the family of Dee Leverson. Dee Leverson's husband, Ron, was a citizen of the year a number of years ago. Ron and Dee were both very, very active in the city of Darien. Dee passed away. We sent her an invitation to our citizen of the year banquet, and because she's gone, she could not attend, but her daughter wanted us to know that she thanked us for remembering to invite her mom, and that her mother loved the city of Darien, and she truly appreciated the invitation. And then my final one is from Jack Mancioni, and Jack writes the following, Dear Mayor Marques, this correspondence is in reference to the exceptional assistance that the community of Woodmere received from the city of Darien during and after the tornado that severely damaged their neighborhood. Dan Gombeck, Brian Vanna, and Jordan Yaki have worked above and beyond in assisting MI Construction rebuild Woodmere. So often, public government only hears the complaints, and rarely, rarely hears about the good things that are accomplished. The service levels and response, coordination and cooperation by both the administrative and field staff greatly assisted in the efforts of safety and restoration of the devastated community. We are on the final stage of completing Woodmere, beginning the front entrance this week. We have attached a copy of this commemorative plaque that will be mounted on the Woodmere Island that hosted staging for vehicles and materials for over 18 months. We again wish to thank the city of Darien and make special acknowledgement of those who helped keep Woodmere safe during the construction, and he gave us a copy of what the plaque's going to look like. And I also like to mention at this point, not only did we work and assist Woodmere, but we actually went over and we assisted Woodridge as well. So, and we actually also went over and assisted the Lake, Lake in the Woods, what is it, Bruce Lake area?
Yeah, DuPage County, correct.
Yeah, we actually were over there removing trees and materials for them, so kudos to our Public Works guys, kudos to Brian and Jordan for arranging all that. A lot of thankful people in that area. So that concludes my, my communication. I'm losing my voice. I think it was my arm, it's my voice. All right, that takes us to the mayor's report, and I know you've been waiting a while, and I appreciate that. I want to say that, I know I'm going to pronounce it wrong, Jason Oscarup, okay, is here with the Hinsdale South High School Civics Department, and I guess Kelly is here, and we have our Hinsdale South Assistant Principal here. And Jason, Jason, when you get up, would you introduce everybody, so we know exactly who everybody is in the audience? Come on forward.
So we have with us on our civics department, we have Ms. Kelly Van Hout, Mr. Alexander Biddo, Dr. Kerry Peranto, Assistant Principal for Hinsdale South, and then we have students, and they want to introduce themselves when they come up to do the presentation.
Okay.
Okay. So I just want to say good evening, I'm Jason Oscarup, I'm the Director of Operations for the Hinsdale Township District 86 High Schools. We have been, I'm here with the Hinsdale South Civics Class to discuss the safety on Claretton Hills Road between the west parking lot and the main entrance of Hinsdale South High School. We, no, 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 we're, the students with the assistance of Ms. Kelly Van Hout and Mr. Alexander Biddo, created a plan to show you the installation of some crosswalk LED signs to, to help slow down the traffic for the staff and students of Hinsdale South High School. With the collected data that these, these signs would also provide added safety for the residents and the community of Darien. The, the community uses our facilities very often between rentals, between our stadium, there's community members constantly walking on our track, using it as a, you know, safe haven for them to walk instead of just on the street. So, I don't know where we're at. Together, we believe that working with the city, we can make a safer community with the decrease any accidents that could occur without the installation of these crosswalk signs on Claretton Hills Road. As a district, we are extremely proud of these students' efforts and ability to bring such an important safety concern to our attention with a solid plan and commitment. We appreciate your attention, and I'm going to pass it on to the students, and they can start their presentation.
You might want to move that microphone over, so we catch your voice.
Yes, you're here.
Good evening, my name is Umar Hassan, I'm a senior at Hinsdale South High School.
And my name is Nakira Culver, I'm also a senior at Hinsdale South.
And for our service-loving project, for our civics class, we were coming up with ways we can make Hinsdale South a safer environment, and a lot of our ideas revolved around the parking lot and the crosswalk and overall transportation. So we're proposing a way we could enhance safety and the flow of traffic of Hinsdale South.
The problem that we currently have is that we have walking signs that are easily knocked over, easy to miss, and are impacted by weather. And as you can see in the first picture at the top, there is no sign, and there is snow on the ground, it's a pretty gloomy day, so it's hard to see the sign. Sometimes there is no crossing guard to help stop the busy school day traffic and guide students across. Cars oftentimes block the crosswalk, making it difficult for kids to walk across safely, as you can see in the second picture, and students don't always know that cars are going to stop when they're walking across the street.
So we're proposing that we add lights to our existing sign, as well as potentially So, we're proposing that we add lights to our existing sign, as well as potentially the ground as well, to, to make sure that they're visible and vibrant for passing traffic, and remove our current sign, as you can see right there on the bottom, which basically has the same structural integrity as a wet floor sign. And enhancements like this have been proven to decrease pedestrian accidents by up to 48%.
This is our current crosswalk situation. At the top, we have a crosswalk that doesn't really connect to anything, and that we're hoping to remove. And we hope to have the bottom two crosswalks used and electrified to make traffic flow easier and students be seen more easily, students will be more visible, and it will just be a smoother process walking across the street.
And this will overall be beneficial because it'll provide another layer of safety, especially throughout the school day for PE and band students who cross the street without a cross, crossing guard. It'll be, it'll operate 24/7. It'll be visible throughout the day and night, and it'll be easier for snow removal, as our current situation often gets plowed over by the snowplow, as well as high-speed wind, as Chicago often experiences. And this will hopefully improve driver awareness and compliance between pedestrians, pedestrians and drivers, and hopefully give them more time to decrease, decrease their speed with the flashing lights.
From 2007 to 2011, nearly 1,700 children from ages five to 18 were struck by vehicles in the crosswalk within the block of schools in Chicago. Nearly 30% of Chicago pedestrian fatalities occur in marked crosswalks caused by distracted, impaired, drowsy, or reckless drivers. And you got to think, we do get a lot of traffic being probably less than a mile away from the highway. People are coming to and from work, so it does get pretty busy during certain times of the day.
So, back in 2019, Downers Grove North student was struck by a car while crossing the crosswalk from the parking lot to the school. And Downers Grove North has a similar crosswalk situation as Hinsdale South, where they have to cross the street to get to their school. And Hinsdale South does not need a similar situation to this, as some, this could be easily preventable, and it completely devastated the Downers Grove North community.
We surveyed Hinsdale South Social Studies classes, and we got 408 responses. Most students are either dropped off by parents or drive themselves to school. Hinsdale South students that live less than a mile away don't receive bus services, so they mean, that means that they have to, like, find a way to school. Like, either they're dropped off, they walk, they're using, like, the crosswalks, you know. In the graph, 63% of students use the crosswalks when they arrive or leave school. And then 79.2% of participants surveyed, surveyed have witnessed cars not paying attention at least one time throughout the week while crossing the street. And that's really alarming, and I feel like with the lights, it can be prevented, and we can really decrease the numbers if we add this other layer of safety.
So, in the survey, we also asked for testimonials from students and staff, and a staff member stated that years ago, a car was speeding up toward the red light and nearly hit a student. The student was actually able to put his hand out and touch the hood of the car as he jumped out of the way. The driver of the car honked at the student and yelled at him for being in the way. The student had been in the crosswalk previous to the car coming through. And the student stated that last week on Wednesday, I was walking out of school trying to cross the street, and I thought the car saw me, but I guess not, and I almost got hit. And in both of these situations, the drivers think that they had, they think they have the right of way, which they obviously don't, and the flashing lights would hopefully enforce the fact that the students always have the right of way if they're present.
And then here are a few more testimonials. Here's one from a Hinsdale South student. They said that quite recently, there have been some instances with drivers either not caring that there are students currently walking in the crosswalk, or nearing the crosswalk and simply driving right through. In an attempt to catch the light, many of these drivers are speeding through the crosswalk with students still walking on it. And another Hinsdale South student says, "I had to stop in the middle of the road because a car was speeding and wouldn't slow down for me. I stared at the car as she passed, and she yelled out the window that she doesn't have to stop." And then this just furthermore shows that people think they have the right of way, even though they don't, and the lights will be a good thing to have and make the students more visual and show that they're walking across the street.
This will not only be beneficial to the Hinsdale South community, but as well as the Darien community as a whole, as we have many after-school hours events where the, where the community utilizes the parking lot and the crosswalks, such as, you know, Junior Hornet Camp, Swarm Football, College Night, and as well as the Pace Bus Stop that's right by the student parking lot. And a lot of the times, in our school events, such as graduation and homecoming, are, both parking lots are full, and people who are unfamiliar with our parking situations, such as elderly people, as well as kids, will be crossing the street without a crossing guard, oftentimes throughout the night.
Normally, we have about 900 cars going through each of our intersections from 250 to 315, and there are 500 cars in both the student and teacher's lot. And there are 3, 1,300 kids exiting the building at the end of the day. So, as you can imagine, it gets pretty congested. There's a lot of things going on, and with the lights, we feel like it will just be safer and better for kids to have.
We also surveyed that 500 students cross the road during school hours, 400 of those being students who are crossing the street to use the track and field for PE, and 80 of those being band kids with their instruments practicing for marching band. And 276 students have purchased parking passes in the parking lot. However, the statistic often goes up as more sophomores and juniors get their licenses and start driving. And many of those cars are carpool cars, where they drive siblings and friends. Faculty also park in the student, in the student lot, as well as traveling substitute teachers. And during our early release, kids who have early release or late arrival, they cross the street without a crossing guard, as well as early release Wednesdays, where Hinsdale Central staff comes to Hinsdale South for meetings.
Thank you for your time and consideration. Any questions?
Yeah, I got a question. So, these lights, I'm assuming you press a button, and the lights would go on on the street when people are crossing. They wouldn't be on all the time flashing. I'm-
It would probably be on all the time flashing.
Oh, it wouldn't be?
I can comment once they're done, so.
Okay, okay. That's, that's my, because if they're on all the time, people would be like, they're just going to bowl through it after a while.
Correct.
So, if they're flashing when they're, you would press a button, correct, Dan?
If the students are finished, I'd love to entertain the city council if there's an opportunity.
Mayor?
I just want to say, that was fantastic.
Yeah, you guys did a great job.
I'm super impressed. Long overdue, having three Hornet graduates, all who have parked in that lot, myself, who have volunteered at the school during the day, and that's where volunteer parents park. And it can be detestifying. And I know Rocco, who was, you know, a longtime Hinsdale South employee, who was a crossing guard, like the Walmart greeter, and I know, like, during, you know, peak hours, there's someone there, but most of the time, there's nobody there. And people, just like in grocery store parking lots, they aren't paying attention, and it is very scary. So, thank you for bringing this to our attention, and I commend your, your group on an excellent presentation.
Downers Grove, you alluded to it, the Downers Grove North, they have a stoplight where they hit the button. It's, it's a, it's a regular traffic signal. And unfortunately, Beth lost her life to a DUI, it was a DUI on that case. So, no crosswalker, you know, flipping lights, flashing lights would have saved that poor girl. So, just FYI in that.
Lester?
Great job, guys. So, we've been, we've been back and forth for some years now, pre-COVID, during COVID. This project has been in the works for a while. Dan outlined some things that they had to do, like four items that they had to do, but they're here because it is a safety concern. And we've talked about frontage roll, we've talked about sun, and this is a key cornerstone of our community, Hinsdale South. So, you know, they're here because they want our support, not only just, you know, applauding them, but they want our support financially as well with their project. And I hope that you guys will be on board to support, if possible, to support their efforts, and whatever remedies that Dan has outlined for them to, to do. So, he's outlining a great, great proposal, and I think, you know, we hear him out.
Sir, if I may, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Yeah, Beck, I know we've been in conversation, yes, for Lester's comments over the last couple of years, probably since COVID, actually. More recently, I'm not sure if Jason is here this evening, you are, okay, I wasn't sure. I missed the name, so apologize. But Jason, I know I just recently sent him an email back in January, and the concern is, you know, the city has not taken this as their infrastructure. This serves the school. It's, you know, when it was installed, how it was installed, is somewhat of a mystery. While most of, you know, there's a certain population that it serves, in other words, besides Darien students, it serves people in Willbrook, a little bit of unincorporated. So, again, while I don't have all those numbers, the question now becomes policy. We've taken on, the city has taken on the role that when the striping fades, that we will restripe it. When the signs are knocked down, the signs are damaged, the Municipal Services Department will replace them. Recently, and it's a great point that all the students came up with, because we're actually approving something on the city council, hopefully approving something on the city council tonight, that's similar to what you're referring to. It's a pedestrian crosswalk just north of Plainfield Road, and there's standards of how it needs to get applied. So, the first and foremost thing is that, you know, there's two questions. Number one, is the city willing to participate in this? What's the cost? The cost, and I happen to have it, 37, approximately $37,000. Now, again, it's a policy question of whether or not the city council is willing to help finance or finance at all. The second thing is that there has to be an engineering study, a traffic engineering study. The two crosswalks that are currently in place are probably outdated from a technical engineering standpoint. So, there's got to be some engineering done to how it's constructed, to where it's constructed, and the methodology that it takes to construct, in other words, signage. And again, there's, there's signalization. That signalization is, and make it simple, push to activate, okay? The cost from probably a year and a half ago has gone up probably about 20%, 30%. I don't recall, Jason, I don't know if you do, but one of the processes was going solar. Solar is a little less expensive. Unfortunately, I do not recommend solar in these situations. Why? December, January, parts of February, there's a lack of sun. With that lack of sun, you know, it's been demonstrated through our speed limit signs, where they will stop working for a period of time. We don't want to have that situation. So, again, we have gone to an electrical system up on Clarendon Hills Road, north of Plainfield, like I said earlier. So, unless there's some direction from the city council, I know that I have put forward a proposal back to Hinsdale South High School for the cost of approximately $37,000, of which an IGA would also be required for the maintenance and responsibility coming back. When I say maintenance, the city would do the maintenance, the responsibility would fall back to Hinsdale South. If there was a concern, no matter what, we would still go out there and address the situation as needed. So, now it will be a bill back for any type of maintenance to the high school.
Jason, your, your, your ask is for the city to go half on the project?
Yes. Yeah, so, the original proposal that Dan sent out to me and everything was about $26,000. So, I don't know where the 37 come from. We can go back and look into that. But once I engaged Alderman Vaughn with this to see what the city can do to help Hinsdale South and the safety of all the people that use that area, we go half. I'm okay with that, but we do need some city support.
And Jason, I think your comment with the 26,000 might have been with the solar, until I did a little further research and felt that solar was not adequate for the safety.
Well, I have not received that proposal, so we can get back into that and look at it.
Sure.
Not to exceed 26,000.
Yeah, in this case, it's 37,000 at this point, period.
But now, it's even more than what we were proposing in the original proposal that Dan sent. So, now we're looking at even more support.
So, but you are interested in a cost sharing?
Yes.
Okay. And Dan, liability and all that would be on the school?
The li, well, when we say liability, you know, if we were to do this, I would recommend that the city entertain this fully. I'm just trying to see if I have a traffic consultant's cost in here for the evaluation.
Because I, because I know that if we put up a stop sign somewhere that's not warranted, and something happens as a result of that, we bear some-
Correct. From a liability standpoint, the way it's constructed, the city would born, would born to liability. That's why a traffic consultant is required to be able to put out the standards in that's referred to these MUTCD, or the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, okay? But the cost for the engineer is not in here. If we were to deploy an engineer, in our case, we would use the same one, KLOA, who's a well-known traffic engineer for their services. I would estimate that that would be approximately 5,000 to 7,500 in addition to. So, now we're up to 42,000, roughly 42,000, 45,000.
Okay. Brian?
Jason, has the school board or the district allocated money for this, or whatever happens between the city and the school district, then you would have to go back to the school board?
So, we have, right now, we had a budget up to $26,000 for it. So, to go back for more, we'd have to go back to the board and do our diligence on that.
Is it 26,000 from your side, or 26,000 1313?
We budgeted 26,000.
Okay, okay.
Just off the side. I'm asking, you know, it's a lot of money. We just put it out there to that, for the amount that it would be, we looked at, we would be able, since it is a city road, to go half with that 1313, on our end before the new price came through.
So, even with the new prices, you guys are budgeting for, correct, to come in?
All right, then, Dale, Zach, you had a-
It's more for Dan. So, we're budgeting about, or on the agenda tonight is about $12,000 for a crosswalk across Community Park. How is this different, and what would explain the additional expenditure to have two of these? Because if you take 12, multiply it, it's 24,000, and you're talking 37. Now, I understand what we're, we're just approving the actual purchase of it, and not other things. So, where do we get from, would it be the same as this, or is it going to be different?
It'd be a little bit different, because there's some services that are being incorporated, such as the concrete in the Clarendon Hills Road sidewalk project. The striping is also being incorporated as part of 67 Streets. So, there's some other moving pieces that are not eligible for this portion right here, besides the engineering, which I just stated.
Right.
Let's see, you know, there's, there's sidewalk removal, for example. We have to remove the existing crosswalks potentially.
So, the signals would be approximately the same, but we do have all these-
Correct. There's collateral. Yes. And the signals are budgeted at 11.5. So, we're basically right in line with what we're presenting this evening as well.
Dan, were you going to bring this to Municipal Services somewhere down the line?
I was not going to, because at this point, you know, like I said, from a policy standpoint, this was all the school's responsibility, as far as the installation, the engineering. You know, again, we've been, we've been foregoing with striping and not charging anyone, just, okay, it's a road, it has to be striped, we're going to stripe it, take on the cost. That striping is basically crosswalks, which is a very, you know, minimal, de minimis amount.
Mayor?
So, I'm confused, I mean, I know we discussed this, it's been a couple of years, but, you know, and I, I'll try to go back in my brain and remember what I said then. But, I mean, I know it's, you're going from one school facility to another, but you're crossing a roadway that belongs to the city. It's not just students, it's other community members that are accessing that. And now that we have the situation where we're putting in a crosswalk further north up Clarendon Road, Hills Road, to basically access Community Park, are we hitting the Park District with the charge to do the crosswalk for the Park District?
The answer is no, but the whole crosswalk serves all the Darien residents within that quadrant.
I don't see this as being any different. I mean, I know more than Darien residents go to Hinsdale South. It feeds other areas, but the majority of the students in that building live in Darien, and I think it's a huge safety thing. And other- And other people come and go from those buildings that are not just students, that are, you know, staff members or community members. I mean, just to attend a musical, it draws in hundreds of people multiple nights. So I think this is long overdue, and I think it's very fair that we meet in the middle and do cost sharing with the, with the Hinsdale South High School.
And Alderman Solva won't argue that point at all. Again, this is somewhat of a policy that's been in effect for over the years, including the crossing guards and how they police it on their own. So just wanted to make that comment. But again, we do not have this item for budget consideration coming up here. So if there's any, you know, if there's any opportunity for the city council to include that, I would ask that we would have funding for this at the same time.
Any other opinions here? I didn't hear from this side at all.
I had two boys that had gone to Hinsdale South, and Tristan, my youngest, was passing across the street one time and almost got hit by a car. Luckily, he was paying attention. The point is, is that anything that we're going to do, okay, is going to be an improvement. We're never going to eliminate a hundred percent accidents, it's just not going to happen. But if we can turn around and do something that's going to improve the safety even a little bit, then it's worth its weight. So I'm all for it, so.
Lester?
You.
Yeah, he's like.
No, I just wanted to know, you.
Alderman Kenny?
Any, any grant opportunities out there to write a grant for any of this?
Yeah, we could try, you know, we've researched grants, we've tried to research grants as much as possible. Matter of fact, you know, even for the one on Clearnails Road, there was nothing available. There's some limited grants, but not that would refer back to these types of situations, period. I don't know, Hinsdale South may have some opportunities for some grants, but I have not seen any in respect to these.
Have you ever seen any private fundraising for anything along these lines in your years of doing this? The reason, the only reason I'm asking, because I just saw Rotary Club Downers Grove last week do a presentation where they went over the Miahwee Africa for water wells, and it was a lot more than twenty-six thousand dollars.
Oh, sure.
This is our community. This is our, I mean, I'm saying, I'm knocking on the fundraising thing, but it's like, we should be taking care of our safety of our residents.
Alderman Belzak?
Yeah, a hundred percent in favor of it. I've dropped off my daughter's hit school when they were attending, and it's definitely needed. I've seen cars speed up to try to beat the kids to the crosswalk, so I know it's needed.
Alderman Gustafson?
Yeah, and when it comes to student safety, and we got to find a way to do this, I think they did a great job in showing what the need there is. There's definitely a need. So now I think we just kind of have to dig deep and make this happen.
At what point did I say no tonight on that?
Joe, I didn't mean to call you up.
At what point did I say no? I'm just asking a question. I keep, I've asked questions twice tonight, and I'm getting, I'm getting shot down, I'm a little frustrated tonight.
All I did was, you brought up private fundraising, and this to me is not warrant private fundraising.
Yeah, private fundraising, our community, which is private. Is there any way we can, our community can help do this, but we can't.
I fundraised at the high school, and it's challenging enough. I'm saying this is not something, in my opinion, that falls under the need for private fundraising. This is something our public, our municipality should support.
Alderman Belzak or Alderman Clistic?
Yeah, we take a lot of pride when we advertise the city of Darien in our booklet and when new residents move in. Hinsdale South serves a selling point, right? So it sort of makes sense that we put some investment in what we're advertising and making sure that we, you know, we keep kids safe. And it's the last thing you want to do is have one, top high schools around and people say, oh, but it's dangerous crossing the street, right? You don't want that rumor going out there, right? So I'm for it.
I think we have a majority of the city council who supports the idea of an IGA working with you and finding a solution and bearing part of the cost. I'm going to ask Dan to bring this up with his municipal services committee, present to them the cost. He could have conversations with you, Jason, prior to that, so you know the cost. And this way then, if and when, you can get approval based on our approving it. Everybody gets what they want then. Okay? And kids, you guys did a great job.
Yeah.
You know, I'm the father of three boys who all went to Hinsdale South High School, and they all crossed, they all crossed that street going from the school to that parking lot. And yeah, student safety is critical. It is.
Is there other students here that worked on this that you might want to introduce?
Yeah.
My name's Jeremy, and I'm a senior as well, and I worked on the survey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you all in Ms. Van Houten's class?
Yes.
Yeah, good teacher. All right.
Thank you so much.
Jason, I'll stay in touch with you, and maybe perhaps the students can come back to the municipal services committee meeting to see how the policy, policies can actually be implemented and the financing for this. This month? I'll make sure, let me see if there's an opportunity to get it on this month, because I need to get some homework done per se, okay?
Absolutely.
Homework, you guys remember homework?
Seniors, Dan, they don't do homework.
Jason. That's why, that's why I said, remember.
Especially after spring break.
Jason, when you go to municipal services, bring a few of the students along with.
Yeah, please.
Bring these exact ones right here.
Yep.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Nice job. All right. Takes us to our city clerks report. Joanne?
The Darien city offices will be closed on April the seventeenth, I mean, April seventh, sorry about that, in observance of Good Friday. And those people who are registered to vote, if you have not done early voting, please come out to the polls tomorrow. Thank you.
City administrators report. Brian?
No report, Mayor. Thank you.
Department had information or questions? Any questions for either Mr. Gombach or Chief Thomas?
Let's ask Greg a question now, okay?
There appears to be none. Moves us to our treasury report. We have two warrants tonight. First warrant is warrant twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-two. Motion to approve?
No, he used to read it first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was so enthralled with the presentation.
I've been so quiet all night. My one opportunity here.
God forbid.
I won't repeat the warrant number, but I'm asking for approval. And the amount of six-hundred-ninety-eight-thousand, ninety-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents from the funds listed, and payroll for the period ended March ninth, and the amount of two-hundred-eighty-nine-thousand, four-hundred-seventy dollars and twenty-six cents for a total to be approved, nine-hundred-eighty-seven-thousand, five-hundred-seventy dollars and thirteen cents.
Can I have a motion to approve twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-two? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Questions or comments? You've known the roll?
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Six ayes, or seven ayes, I'm sorry, everybody voted yes.
Want to start it off for me?
Warrant twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, from the listed funds and the amount of three-hundred-fifty-four-thousand, three-hundred-eighty-nine dollars and seven cents. Payroll for the period ended March twenty-third and the amount of two-hundred-seventy-two-thousand, one-hundred-eighty-three dollars and sixty-six cents for a total to be approved of six-hundred-twenty-six-thousand, five-hundred-seventy-two dollars and seventy-three cents.
Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? None, the roll?
Belzak?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Standing committee reports. Do any of the aldermen have things to share? Alderman Belzak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next municipal services committee meeting will be three weeks from today on April twenty-fourth at six PM in council chambers.
Thank you. Alderman Sullivan?
The administrative finance committee met tonight, and the next meeting will be on Monday, May first at six PM upstairs in the conference room. The economic development committee has rescheduled their May meeting to Thursday, May thirteenth at seven PM in council chambers.
Thank you. Alderman Kenny?
Police committee meeting is scheduled to meet on Monday, April seventeenth at six-thirty across the parking lot in the police training room, pending agenda items.
Thank you very much.
Chief, would you make sure Rose knows it's six-thirty, not six?
Yes.
We're trying to accommodate a couple of my colleagues. Okay, thank you, sir.
Takes us to questions and comments, agenda related. Do any of the members of the audience have any questions on anything on our agenda tonight?
I'm here.
Sylvia, wrong seat, wait a minute.
Thank you, City Council. I'm kind of here, and it's kind of interesting to have heard that presentation from the students of Hinsdale South, because I kind of think that maybe some of these things might go hand in hand. Specifically, I'm looking at, you know, I heard your discussion during the work session regarding the balcony off of Plainfield, and I agree that that is a kind of a focal point in terms of driving by City Hall, but it's also not really a main entrance. When I looked at the agenda, it looked like it was budgeted for thirty-five thousand last year. Was that the right number?
Thirty. That's correct.
So, you know, to see it jump from thirty-five thousand to ninety-five thousand in a year for a budget seems pretty high, and I think my concern was that it looked like it was for approval for a no-bid contract, or a no-bid contract. So as much as I think that it's important to budget for it, maybe there are more cost-effective alternatives, like a portico that would provide that coverage and maybe not be load-bearing. Obviously, I like the idea of the brick, but, you know, looking at the rendering, there's a lot of brick. So, you know, maybe something that really kind of matched, a brick version of what matches what's out there already might, you know, shave off a few dollars, I don't know. But, you know, in conjunction with that, if money can be saved doing something that still meets the aesthetic, is still structurally sound, maybe not load-bearing, maybe not using that as a balcony anymore, but more of a portico entrance coverage for the water, you know, there might be some dollars left over then to help fund, you know, the crosswalks that we, that the students were just talking about and fit in the same budget. So that was all, so, thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, that takes us.
I'm just listening to that, just because we do have the budget on for tonight, I just wanted to make sure that, really, really, those are independent. You know, Sylvia brought up, maybe we would have money, but if the city council wants to do this project with the high school, you know, outside of what we have budgeted, we certainly could do that. It's not a large dollar amount in the scheme of our multimillion-dollar budget, so.
I think, and I think it's critical for people to understand that all of you approved a budget that had this budgeted in there, the balcony in there. So just want to make you aware of that. No old business, takes us to our consent agenda, and I'll read each of these items. Consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance approving a variation from the Darien zoning ordinance for sixty-eight oh-five Scotch Pine Trail. Item B, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property owned by the city of Darien. Item C, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of one new trailer, model number P eight CAM one sixty-four STTXW, tilt trailer from A&amp;W Trailer LLC, in the amount of fifteen thousand, thirty-nine dollars. Item D, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase and delivery of one new sewer grade set from LNG Welding Services Incorporated in an amount of seven thousand, sixty dollars. Item E, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Tapco for the purchase of a pedestrian crosswalk signalization system for a mid-block crosswalk application at Claretton Hills Road and Roger Road in an amount not to exceed eleven-thousand, seven-hundred-seventy-nine dollars and two cents. And item F, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Dorner Company for the city's water system in an amount not to exceed fifty-four-thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars to rebuild internal critical components of pump control valves and altitude valves. Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Kenny, and the roll.
Shower?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The consent agenda has been approved, takes us to new business. Our first item under new business is consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance approving the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget. Motion to approve. Alderman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Gustafson, and discussion.
I don't know, can we talk, should we talk about that balcony item on this? Should we, should I, should I not, should I not vote yes on this because I missed it during the budget hearings? That's all I'm saying. Aggravated nightmare, forgive me.
Budget doesn't mean.
I don't think approving the budget changes.
Is there a question you want us to answer, or you're just venting?
No. Tonight, I'm just venting. I'm just venting tonight, sir, thank you.
Okay.
I wasn't here, I wasn't here during the budget hearings for that discussion. I apologize. Otherwise, I would have probably said something when I saw a budget for a balcony at ninety-thousand dollars, but I missed it, so shame on me.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, we need a roll. This is a roll.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Our budget's been approved. Item B, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution waiving the competitive bid process and accepting a quote from Landmark Construction Services Incorporated for the City Hall balcony deck remodel project at seventeen oh-two Plainfield Road for the removal of the existing balcony and the material and insulation of the replacement balcony deck in an amount not to exceed eighty-five thousand dollars. Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Sullivan, and discussion. I know we spent a lot of time on this earlier. Ted?
Yeah, I'll take the point on this, and let me explain. I'm going to explain a lot, and I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but to the people at home, let's just give a little background on this. The original budget was a lot less. This new, basically, this new balcony is about, going to be about ninety thousand dollars. The one thing I love about our city is everyone on this, sits on this council, will always take a look at the dollar and say, is this dollar, should we do this, should we not do this? And God bless municipal services, because they basically said, no, it's not worth it, it's not worth the money, not putting the money into it, blah, blah, blah. I can go on. I don't want to put words in their mouth, but absolutely, they're looking at the dollars, and this is what they're saying, and don't want to do it. When I look at something, I look at it long-term, and I tried for fourteen years, and you guys will know me better than anybody, I say it over and over again, all right? Are we chasing good money after bad, or are we chasing good money after good? Okay? So people are looking at this at home and saying, this is ninety thousand dollars, why do we need this? Well, let me tell you guys what's going to go happen. The alternative is basically, we're going to get rid of the balcony, and then we're going to turn around and put up an awning, okay? The awning could last as long as the balcony, it could be shorter, it could be longer, we don't know. But I'm looking at this situation, and I'm going to try and explain this and say this, my thought process on this, okay? And ninety thousand dollars, what I'm looking at is good money, and we're chasing it after good. And here's the reason why, okay? If we're going to turn around, we need to have something to go over that area to protect it from the water, okay? I think the balcony is going to be better than an awning. I don't know how long an awning is going to last. We don't know what's going to happen with the awning, with the flow of water going into it down to the bottom. We've had flooding problems down there. Yes, we've made it better with an open drain, but still having that awning up there is not going to be as good as the balcony. That's the first thing. The second thing is, we're not sure how we're going to be able to put metal rods into brick that's going to hold up an awning. How long is that going to last? How much is going to happen if we have a blizzard? What's going to happen to the major snowstorm? What happens if with 120 mile per hour wind? There's too many situations in this process, if we go with an awning, that we're just not going to know about. And when it gets right down to it, even if it's $48,000, or $50,000, or half whatever the budget is, we're going to be chasing good money after bad, because in the end, I'm not even talking about the aesthetics, because we're going to have a, we're going to have a door that's going to be blocked out, that you can't walk out, because you're going to have an awning there, and then on top of it, once it's all settled, we're going to have to end up painting it, and then we're not know what's going to happen in 10 years when we have a structural problem with rods that are coming out of it. So in the end, I'm going to tell you right now, I'm all for getting this balcony, because I know in the end it's going to be right, it's going to be done right, we're going to put the money into it, and we know probably we're not going to have long-term problems. So that's my point on this, I'll leave it at that.
Anyone else?
During the workshop, Mr. Gomick had made a point that did not, did not hear during municipal services, is the fact that even if you were to just put a, just put an awning there versus this balcony, that you would still have a safety issue at the door, you would still have to do something to prevent somebody from walking out that door, and with, whether it be bricking, bricking the door up and everything else, and at that point, it could very easily be more than $85,000 that this line item has out on here tonight. It is, like, you know, Mayor, you are correct, it is, you know, it's in the budget for $90,000, this is coming under, under that budget, like I alluded to, I was not at that budget hearing, you know, and I'm not wishing I was. So, I don't think it's a bad thing, and I also know that, you know, Mr. Gomick, throughout the course of a budget year, he's always finding ways to, you know, shave money off of this and off of that, but also, I also listened to Sylvia, you know, moments ago, talking about looking, looking for money to try to save, so we can, you know, we can do a crosswalk, so. I'm in favor for this, even though I, we voted no during municipal services, and we didn't vote no municipal services just because no. The question came up is Dan wanted to see this project get completed, you know, quicker because of, because of supply and because of labor, and the only way we could possibly do that is if we had tabled, if we had tabled it at municipal services last week, and had staff give us some more ideas, we would have to, we wouldn't get that back in soul next, next, the last Monday in April. So the best thing for us to do at that point was to vote it down and discuss it in this format here tonight, and I apologize, Mayor, if you don't like the fact that we did something to think, think things through. I thought, I thought we acted responsibly, unfortunately, I don't think you see that tonight, so. But my, my mind here has changed here, wouldn't be the first time I've ever changed a vote once in this chair, so that's all I got tonight.
Thank you, Alderman Kenny. Mary?
Oh, I, I think municipal services did an admirable job talking it through, that's why we have committees, we have committees to vet topics all the time. I just think, you know, I asked Dan specifically, I, and it sounds like municipal service took a field trip outside, I took a field trip outside, this has been a problem that's needed to be addressed for a long time, just like, you know, when you go to re-roof your house, there's a lot of different options of product to put on your house, but you usually want to do, if you're going to be staying in your house for a long time, put the best product on it, because it's going to last a long time, so that you don't have to revisit it. I just feel like this is a long-term solution that'll put a quality, you know, I don't think of it as like the balcony that the queen comes out on and waves, it's a, it's a, it's another roof line to protect the lower level, it'll aesthetically look good, we won't have to patchwork in the rest of the building, because we've taken things away, we've got a door that goes nowhere, we're going to have to put a bar across it, or take out the door, put in a window, it's not just a matter of locking the door and hoping nobody exits, you just can't do that, that's a major OSHA violation. But I, you know, I don't like to spend more money than we ever have to, I think we're all, all of us sitting up here universally agree that we are being very fiscally responsible when we approach things, but I too believe the recommendation that Dan Gomick is making, I trust that impeccably, and I understand that the waiving of the competitive bid process is put in place because you couldn't get other people to bid on it, correct?
That is correct.
So why waste time going out for bid when you couldn't get people to bid on it in the first place? Then we're losing time, and, and honestly, having a family that's in the construction business, the cost of doing business is only getting to be more expensive, so four months from now, it's only going to cost us more to do it. I feel like the sooner we can pull the trigger on this, the better.
Anyone else? Alderman Belzak?
Just to reiterate what I said earlier, it wasn't about, we don't want to do this, it was about, is there a better, less expensive way of doing it? And, and I still feel that way, and, and, and I know it was only a week ago, or whatever it was, when we had this, and I, I gotta tell you, I've read the response from the construction company about the costs regarding the awning, and I don't understand a lot of them, because it says deduct X for masonry, and then I look at what masonry was, and it was actually a lower number than that, so it didn't really make sense. I would like a better explanation on that, I mean, Dan, maybe you can tell us, there's going to be some cost, I mean, they say demolition is $3,000, but it's really more than that, isn't it? I mean, when I say demolition, I'm hauling away, fixing up where you demolished from, it's, there's going to be certain expenses, by taking it away and leaving what's there and recovering what's there, or fixing up what's there, regardless of which one thing we do, there's going to be fixed costs, and I don't think it's really clear in the letter that they sent you as to what those are, and, because the cost of the awning is nominal.
Correct.
But I can't figure out, when it's, tell me to deduct, I had it open, now I closed it, X amount of dollars in, in, I'll find it. There it is. So the cost of masonry is $29,800 in the original project, and then they say deduct $30,740, so now we're at a negative number, and that doesn't make sense to me.
Well, basically, what we're doing is the brickwork or masonry is being eliminated, so by being eliminated, now those columns are going to go, you know, be some type of other, the awning itself is going to be some type of, I'll refer to it as a freestanding type of awning, if that was the, if that was what we were to go for. Again, the pillars are probably, the pillars would be gone, there's, I believe, one, two, there are four, three pillars, I can't recall right now.
Tom, I think what you're saying is...
Four.
Apples to apples, right?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure it out. I mean, it says structural framing carpentry is $14,750 on the initial project, and then it says if we do it the other way, take off $16,000.
Right.
Well, again, we're at a negative number.
Yeah.
And, and I get there's overlap, but I would like that explained to me, so I know what I'm voting, approving. It, it just, it, it isn't apples to apples, it's, it's apples to oranges, and it doesn't make, I don't like the way they did it, because they said, we're taking this off, not tell me what we're doing, and you cost X.
I understand.
You're saying, we're taking this off, and, and it's, it's really difficult to, to understand what the expense is. I mean, you know, general conditions, I don't know what that is either, $3,500.
That's basically a markup on for the general contract.
So is, so concrete work is $8,755 on the initial project, and none of it's being eliminated, so what is that?
That's the ADA accessibility.
Then we already have that.
Along.
Where?
For the, for the walk, the ramp that's currently in place, it's not up to par.
Oh, okay, so we're replacing that regardless?
Yes.
So that $8,700's either project?
Yes.
Okay, now I understand that. I, I, that was just my thought, when I was looking at, we're subtracting masonry, subtracting carpentry, it didn't match up with the initial proposal, and it didn't make sense to me.
And there's some modifications, such as the handrail, for example, okay, how are we now, how are we now going to support the handrail for the ADA accessibility, whether that was going to go, that I believe was going to go into the masonry that was proposed originally, now there might be a discount on that masonry, but there's some added cost on some type of pole setting per se, so you can't attach it to the brick anymore, now you have to basically put it into the ground, so on and so forth, so there's some, there's some details, and they're really fine details at this point to where it's really de minimis, but everything can be explained, yes.
Okay. My last question regarding this, though, is, on the letter that they sent, it says, clean, mastic, patch, point, and paint existing face brick, wouldn't we be doing that regardless?
No, because everything that we're doing is basically...
Can be covered by the...
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Michael?
I've sat pretty quietly by during this entire discussion, and I think the one thing that comes out, I agree with you, Tom, and I think on most things, and it just seems like, I mean, the, the original plan looks wonderful, but if there is a way of saving money, that's even more wonderful, everybody knows I love saving money, Sylvia likes, I think we all like saving money, and it just doesn't seem like we've done the rest of our homework to get from point A to point B, and nothing bad about Dan, Dan's sort of been thrown in this in the last couple days and trying to patch this together, why not just give him a couple more weeks to come up with something where everybody can be comfortable with whatever the decision is? Because it seems like right now, nobody's totally comfortable, yeah, this looks great, but can we save a few dollars on it? It may end up costing us a couple thousand dollars of extra engineering. I'm, I'd be willing to gamble a couple thousand dollars to save potentially $40,000 or $50,000. Just my own opinion.
Anyone else? Yeah, I mean, yeah, and I, and I agree with that, I mean, I've managed, and I've been through numerous budget processes in my career, and the one, simply put, the one rule I always made is I don't vote for something until I fully understand the alternative, and I, I don't understand right now what the alternative is. It may not be as good, and then I'll vote for this, but I don't know, and until I know, I can't vote. As simple as that. Tom?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Initially, I didn't see the, the plans here previously, I do, I do see them now, and during our meeting here, I took some time, I looked at other municipal services, I mean, other village halls, Westmont, Burrage, Downers Grove, I think is getting a new one, and then sort of come to realize, I think Mayor made the point that you hang your hat on, on the City Hall, sort of, it is sort of a show, a showplace a little bit, if it's not managed, not well-maintained, people are like, wow, do you want to move into Darien, things are falling apart, what does this mean for other items, right? So everyone else makes a very good point, if you can save a few bucks here and there, but ultimately, you know, the image of someone driving by, looking to buy a home, maybe a young couple, glance at this, like, ah, you know, it's, things are falling apart, leaves sort of bad, bad taste, right? Like that sign in front of the insurance company there at Cass Avenue and Plainfield, right? Just a sign, but it leaves a bad image for the whole town, right? So you take that same opinion, and you apply it to City Hall, and, and, you know, bring those questions to mind, so I'd be fine supporting it.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Anyone have anything to add? If nothing more, the roll.
Shower.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Belzak.
Nay.
Clistic.
Aye.
Gustafson.
No.
Kenny.
Aye.
I have five ayes and two nays.
The item passes, it takes us to item C, consideration of a motion to approve a contingency in the amount of $5,000 due to unforeseen structural deficiency items that may be encountered during the building construction. Motion to approve, Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Sullivan, discussion? If none, the roll.
Shower.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Gustafson.
No.
Clistic.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Six ayes and one nay.
The motion passes, takes us to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Just wanted to mention and say thank you, received a lot of beautiful cards from a lot of people over the last couple of weeks, hasn't been the easiest, sleeping in a recliner every night is, is not a lot of fun, I have a wonderful nurse at home who takes really good care of me, but I've received a lot of things in the mail, a lot of cards, a lot of gifts, I want to thank people for their well wishes and their prayers, I am recuperating, and I'm doing well. Also wanted to mention that on the, on the 19th of April, Alderman Kenny, Alderman Sullivan, City Administrator Van, and I will be going down to Springfield, Illinois. Our main purpose is to get the governor and the state legislature to pass and accept Representative DeLuca's bill, which would increase LGDF from its current 6.16% to 8.5% and there, by increasing it gradually up to the original 10%. We have lost as a city in the last 11 years, over $14 million as a city. The state of Illinois has lost, that means all municipalities have lost $8 billion in that 11 years. There are municipalities that, that is their primary source of revenue, the local government distributive fund. For the city of Darien, it's our, our fourth highest form of revenue, and where does it go? It goes to public safety, and it goes to infrastructure, that's where it goes. The state of Illinois, last year, there was a bill, there were 85 reps that signed on to it, the governor wouldn't let it come up for a vote, and they gave us .10 increase. This year, we have a campaign going, I have personally met with 25 state reps and senators over the last three months, some via Zoom, to ask them to please support this legislation. Alderman Sullivan will be down there, Alderman Kenny will be down there, and we're all going down there with the same purpose, and that is, we're lobbying on behalf of the city of Darien, and we're lobbying on behalf of the municipalities in the state of Illinois, and we have 275 mayors that are supporting this legislation. So if you're a resident out there and you're listening to me, this is your money, this is your money you send to the state, and if you're concerned about saving $40,000 on a balcony, you are losing $600,000 to $700,000 a year in possible revenue by not having LGDF funded where it should be. So call your state representative, call John Curran, call the new Representative Igoski, who's now the mayor of Lamont, call, what's her name, the one with the three names, what's her, Ann Stavert Murray?
Ann Stavert Murray.
Call them, let them know that you want them to support this legislation, we'll be down there on your behalf, I have a personal meeting set up with the governor, along with seven other mayors, and our, our goal is to get Governor Pritzker to see that the best investment that he can make is to invest in local communities. In fact, that's our theme, invest in communities, because if LGF goes through, if they make that increase, we're not just helping one population or another population, we're helping every population in the state of Illinois. So call your state reps and tell them, you want them to support Representative DeLuca's bill, which is going to increase LGDF, and I'm sorry for going on my soapbox tonight, but I wanted to say that. You know, the, what they say in Springfield is, we're getting a bigger piece of the pie now than we did before, and the fact of the matter is, the pie has gotten so big that the state of Illinois has gotten even bigger piece of the pie. Right now, they have close to $2 billion, and increasing it to 8.5%, which costs half a billion, $500 million to local municipalities, and yet they, they, they throw up roadblocks before they'll do something like that, so we need the public support, not just the people in this room, but the people out there in Darien. Pick up your phone, write a letter, let them know that you want this law passed. Thanks, appreciate it. Mary?
Thank you, Mayor. Just an announcement, that the Darien Women's Club is having a glamour gala on Sunday, April 16th, at 11:00 AM, and there's still time to buy tickets, it's open to anybody, you don't have to be a Women's Club member, it'll be a lovely day, you can get information on it by looking in your Darien Direct Connect, or visiting the Darien Women's, that's plural with an S, club.org website.
Can I still say one more thing?
Yeah.
As long as I'm here.
Mind her for three minutes.
I miss this place.
Three minutes, Sylvia.
No, 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 this is, I just wanted to let everyone who's listening know that at the next City Council meeting, we're going to have our environmental committee invited Robin Grange from Argon to come and present to the City Council about things that are going on at Argon, and if there's people that are listening that aren't aware, for the first time in five years, Argon's going to have an open house on Saturday, May 20th, I believe, registration is open if you go to their website, and they're going to have like a full day of activities for, you know, residents and kids and, you know, just the community in general, to actually get in there and see all the wonderful things they're doing, including Aurora, this supercomputer that they, I think it just came online in March, so that's all, thanks.
Sylvia. Anyone else? If not, motion to adjourn. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Sullivan, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.